Have to do with the planning of this great city. Thank you, Lord, for your hand upon Lancaster. And, Lord, I pray that we would do your will here tonight. I pray, Lord, that you'd given us an unusual wisdom from you. And, Lord, I pray that we'd remember to thank you for everything and praise you for that which is done tonight. These things I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If everybody in uniform, please salute. Everybody else put your right hand over your heart. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Could I have the roll call, please?
Commissioners Barkey?
Here.
Ervin?
Here.
Haycock?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chairman Mann? I'm sorry. I apologize. Chairman Voss?
Chairman Mann.
I'm not listening. What did you say?
Chairman Mann. She said chairman.
Oh, really? I'm gonna have to lose a little weight. That's all right. I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioners Jacobs? Absent. Molly?
Thank you.
So we have a quorum. And Commissioner Molly and Commissioner Jacobs is are not here tonight. Both are excused. Only in December, right? Okay. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendaized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the commission. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If we have any uncontested public hearings, the oral staff report will not be presented if no one in the audience wishes to speak on in opposition to the item. The applicant has reviewed the staff report and agrees to abide by the conditions recommended in the report, and the members of the commission wish to weigh the staff report. The first item is our consent calendar for approval of the minutes, and we'll hold that over till the end of the meeting tonight, so the members will have a chance to review the minutes. Next item is new public hearings. We have our first public hearing is on conditional use permit number 0818. Ms. Smith?
Chair Chairman Voss, I will have to recuse myself from voting on this as my youngest daughter works at a business that's in the same building as this proposed project, so I'll be back.
All right. Thank you. However, we still have a quorum. All right. So it's appropriate to open the public hearing on conditional use permit number 0818. And we have received a letter indicating that it's an uncontested matter. So unless members of the commission wish to hear a report, we can move on. The recommendation is before you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 0836 approving conditional use permit number 08-18.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Forgot to ask you, Mr. Ludiki, we do not have speaker's cards, do we?
No speaker's cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further questions or comments on this matter? Please vote.
Motion approving the conditional use permit is approved 4-0.
Thank you. Did you ask? Record reflect, Ms. Smith rejoined us. The next item is for a public hearing is tentative tract map number 63314 and tentative tract map number 66285. Public hearings open on this matter. We did not receive, or at least I'm not aware of, we did not receive a uncontested letter on this matter. Am I correct? We did not?
That's correct.
All right, then let's have a, the public hearing is open. Let's have a staff report, please.
Chairman Voss and Commissioners. The applicant is Morsun Development, and they're requesting two maps side by side. The first map is 63314, approximately 39 acres located on the northwest corner of 35th Street East and Avenue J8. And they're requesting a subdivision for 153 single-family lots in the R-7000 zone. The second one is tentative tract map 66285. It's approximately 40.5 gross acres, and it's located on the northeast corner of 30th Street East and Avenue J8. And they're requesting a subdivision for 169 single-family lots in the R-7000 zone. An 85-foot wide drainage channel separates the two maps. Both maps have been conditioned to install the channel. Two streets, Street E and Street F, have been incorporated into the design to provide connectivity between the subdivisions. And the channel improvement for 15-foot wide trail along the easter portionally, easterly portion of the channel are also conditioned as part of the channel improvements. Access can be provided to the sites from 30th Street East and J4, Avenue J8 and Cajon Street, J8 and Street M, and 35th Street East and J4 and J6. Right turns are also conditioned off of the major streets into the subdivision and arterials. There are no major environmental concerns listed on the projects. Both are required to perform a burrow and owl survey and a nesting bird survey 30 days prior to any ground disturbance. The density of the project is consistent with the general plan designation of urban residential, and the proposed subdivision meets the city's zoning requirement for the R-7000 zone. Sufficient access, utilities, and infrastructure exist or can be provided. Therefore, staff is recommending that the commission approve tentative tract map numbers 63314 and 66285. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the members? Will you hear from the applicant, Mr. Ludiki?
I have one speaker's card. I'm assuming they are the representative of the applicant, David Larson.
David Larson with CCL Engineering. The applicant had a couple of issues that he would like to address and have some clarification made. One was condition, I believe it was 10, and the, on the enhanced decorative pathway, just trying to establish a cost with that, what that would entail, if that could be clarified a little better.
What was the question, Mr. Larson? Condition what?
It was, it was on page two of the piece of legislation.
Regulation of 611?
Yeah, under drainage.
Condition 10?
Uh huh.
And that was established in January of 2006 and has been a condition of the city for a couple of years now.
We're just trying to get a little better feel of what enhanced decorative pathway entails to establish a cost to that. What, is there a standard that we're, that we're being assigned, or is that just a subject to, you know, review of planning?
What's your other question?
In addition was another condition similar to that. It was 54 decorative overflow incorporating a cobble rock design. And that has to do with drainage, the drainage easements. Typically, where we've got drainage issues, cobbles, rock is not a conducive to maintenance.
I think the existing channel has riprap in it, does it not?
And I'm assuming these are overshoots for coming down into the channels that need to be maintained.
I don't know.
Because this is between lots, between lots. So we're talking about, we're talking about...
We'll ask the staff to address those.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll take the pathway. Basically, as you show on your section AA on the map, we have a decorative pathway on the 15-foot access easement.
Okay, so it's gonna be per, our detail will be fine, then?
Well, we'll have, in that, you'll probably have like eight feet of pavement and some landscaping on both sides. It's very limited, and it's gonna be zerscape as well.
Okay. That's great.
Okay.
Now, on the, between the lots?
Yes. Regarding condition number 54, we've kind of modified this condition. I don't know why it was left in the way it is. We've kind of gotten away from the decorative overflow on the surface because, in all honesty, we've not been able to find one design and build that actually works very well. So we've tried to come up with a redundant system of pipes that would provide for a, an outlet to prevent any flooding if the primary system fails. And so the condition, like I said, typically we've rewritten it to say a redundant catch basin storm drain system.
Can that be revised, then?
I think we would want to revise that condition, yes.
Okay. All right. There was another issue with condition 19 and 22 requiring the testing of existing pavement sections and then having those streets potentially revisit or reconstructed. We just had a project, and the reason the owner's concerned is we had a project that had fairly new street improvements put in, but they were to the old standard. And the city has revised those TI standards to have a little thicker sections. And understandable that the city's trying to get better streets, but the owner's concerned that if we have, you know, fairly new construction out there for streets, especially in front of the school, and some of these other, the tracks that have gone in, that he's gonna revisit those streets when they're, they're almost brand new.
Wouldn't you consider that, given the, this is a tentative map, and the time it'll take to prepare improvement plans, get them approved, and build the project, maybe some years out, and those relatively currently relatively new improvements would not necessarily be new at that time?
Well, I'm bringing up the concerns of the owner, and at this time, those streets...
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Those, those streets are new, and yes, I guess if the tract does not move forward in 20 years, then they may need to be resurfaced. But in this case, Chairman Voss, we're talking about the actual thickness design of these streets. You know, there was some old standard that the city had been going to that, let's say, required five over 19 asphalt over base, but now with the new standard, it may be seven over 20. And even though the old standard may have worked in the past, then we're talking about ripping out entire streets and redoing them. So that's his concern.
I would imagine that, like most engineers, you typically make your case when you present your improvement plans and argue the point at that time, but if the standards are set...
The standards are being set here, so.
Okay.
I can just bring it up for the owner's benefit, so. He's concerned with that.
What's unique about this project that, that it should...
Just the fact we have, we have a lot of new construction, but we're worried that it has gone in under the old standards, the school and things like that. And we're gonna be redoing significant amounts of streets that already improved.
Good. Thank you. Any more?
Okay. Nope, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
May I have some questions? Any members have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Larson. Excuse me, just a minute. Go ahead.
Would, would you think it would be appropriate for us to postpone our discussion, discussion or even decision about this until we can come up with a decision about the specific standards? Would you like us to do that?
I don't believe so. If we can't work it out here, I think they'll be willing to work it out later, so. On, on the riprap or the things that you've already talked about, we'll modify. I think that's sufficient at this time. We're just concerned as, as if things can be done today, then yes, we'd like to address it, but if not, then, I don't wanna say we're willing to go forward yet, but I'd like to hear what staff has to say first.
So...
If that can be mitigated in any way.
Why don't you tell us again exactly what it is that you're looking for us to make a decision upon?
Well, in particular, on the south side of both these tracks, I don't know if you can show it up there, the brat, the school has gone in that has paved most of, is that J8?
J8.
J8. They paved an extensive portion of our side of the street. We don't wanna have to go in and rip out and replace a brand-new street because it doesn't meet the new standards. In addition, you've got 30th or 35th on the west or on the east, and there's no street there, but there is on, 30th on the west there. Now granted, that's an old street, and that probably needs to be replaced, but it's the newer construction that we're worried about, and I'm not sure if they've fallen under the new standard or the old standard. So it's just a shame to have to rip out a street that's already just been put in.
So the street on J8 is old, the old standard?
It just was constructed last year with the high school.
And it's the old standard?
I believe so.
I'm not sure what Mr. Larson's referring to, a new standard. To my knowledge, the TI's and minimum pavement thicknesses have not changed in several years.
Well, I'm bringing this up because of a project we just ran into the same situation where we had, and I'm not sure the age of the street, but it's been at least within the last five years, and that's the, this project over on 23rd. And we're ripping out pavement that, if you look at it visually, seems fairly new or doesn't have a lot of repair needs, I would say. But we're tearing it, the street completely out that's improved all the way to Kirby Gutter and replacing the pavement because it doesn't meet the new TI standards that have been associated with that street. Is that correct?
Like I said, the TI standards, to my knowledge, have not changed since about 1990. The only thing that's changed in the last five years regarding pavement thickness, we used to allow three-inch minimum, now we require three and a half. That changed about three to four years ago. That's the only pavement standard, to my knowledge, that would have changed. And that doesn't affect this situation. If they designed the high school street section to our current requirements, your R values should come out the same, and you should have come up with the same structural section, but until you do those tests and design the structural section, I can't answer that.
Well, let me pose, pose a question. What if it was constructed improperly and the section was not, if we test it, and let's say it comes out three inches instead of three and a half, Carl, are we replacing it because they did it improperly, or are we, do you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be the requirement. The requirement is that you design a adequate structural section based on the traffic index and your R values. If this is a recently paved street, the minimum requirement would be for you to grind and overlay the center line. And I, and I believe that is...
That's how, that's what we would like to do.
That is...
If that could be the condition rather than to test and have to redo if it's substandard, then we've got an issue.
Well, this condition applies to all of the streets, 30th and any other street section, so I think the way it's currently written in the standard requirements are that you either grind and overlay, or you reconstruct based on structural section that is designed.
Okay. And if, but if the structural section was not put in accurately or in the first place, and we test and we find out it's substandard, but should have been up to standard, are we required to do that kind of reconstructive work based on someone else's error?
I don't think that's the requirement, that you are penalized for someone else's construction error.
So that, that's what we're concerned of, that we'll go in there and test, and it'll be slightly substandard, and that we're gonna have to come back and repave that street.
May I suggest that we either have a choice tonight to either approve this the way it's recommended, make modifications, or continue it? So if you have, you know, it seems rather late in the game to be discussing paving sections across the floor when you've had ample opportunities. Map's been submitted for some time. And if, you know, if you didn't have time to review it, maybe we should just continue it, and you guys come back in a month or two. Would you like to do that?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I'm just curious, if we, if we can modify the, the way it's written slightly, just to see that if, if the streets are...
Well, I think, I think you've made your point three different ways.
Okay.
I, I think the members either, either understand it very clearly or are confused, and if we are confused, we'll ask staff. But I appreciate your comments. You have anything more to add?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Got something to say, Mr. Ludiki?
Yes. Kind of getting back to your point, the, the applicant's representative is basically sounding like he wants an ironclad agreement made here and now as to what they'll have to do on those streets. And I think the choice before you is either he can go out and do the testing, and we can continue the map over while they figure out what the structure is, and then he can work it out with engineering, and then they can write a specific set of conditions for that. Or he can accept the conditions as written, you know, and he, he leaves it to, in the hands of the discussion between himself and the staff following the receipt of the information when a final map is being, being pursued.
Well, since we're still in public hearing, but the typical process is, if I understand it correctly, all tract maps for this type of use have a set of standard conditions. And at least it's been the practice of the commission as long as I've been around this town, to approve projects based on those conditions. Then once a, once the street sections are designed, we're talking about street, street sections here, once the civil engineer designs those and presents those to city engineering for review with all the soil tests and all those things. If in fact there is an existing condition, for instance, that might support a different condition, they make that argument. And the, sometimes they are reviewed, and sometimes they are considered, and sometimes they're not. However, it doesn't seem to me to be in the purview of the commission to negotiate a street section without data at this time. We would, I, I would suggest we either approve it the way it is or continue it to where the applicant is satisfied with the conditions. So what would be the staff's recommendation?
Staff would recommend that it be approved with the conditions as stated, especially since the two that he's disputing are standard conditions.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions from the members? I'm sorry. Are you addressing us?
That was with the exception of one modification to 54 that we'd already discussed. Not as stated, but with that one modification.
We'll find out.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any further comments from anyone or any other speakers?
I have no other speaker's cards.
All right. It's appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection, and we're open for discussion and questions of staff.
So if we were, we were to make a motion on this, would it, would we include the modification on number 54, then? Is that...
That's your pleasure.
Yes, since we've already had public works indicate that that would be acceptable
Do you have anything further from the members? All right. Do we hear a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 0837 approving tentative tract map numbers 63314 and 66285 with the stated modification to condition number 54.
I second.
Okay. For the record, could you read into the record the specific modification of 54 so there's no question later on?
Could we just make the modification with the map prior, you know, the correction, prior to publishing the approval? Do you know what I'm saying? Because I, I don't have the words on the top of my head. I'll have to go back and find what, what it should be modified to. It's pretty standard that we've been modifying condition number 54. I don't have the language in form.
Oh, all right. Okay. So as long as we, I just wanna make sure we're clear on what we're voting on. All right? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 5-0 with the stated modification to standard condition number 54.
Thank you. Next item is item 4, which is a public hearing on amendment to Title 16 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, the subdivision ordinance. The request is to amend Title 16 of the Municipal Code subdivision ordinance, modifying the requirements of improvements beyond center line of arterial streets. Public hearing is open. Do we have a staff report?
Commissioner Wilson, Chairman Wilson, Commissioners. The item before you is intended to address a situation where we have, ultimate street right-of-way is not entirely within the proposed project. City subdivision ordinance currently requires that the subdivider provide 20 feet beyond, 20 feet of paved improvement beyond the center line on arterial streets. This requirement does not currently address the need for paved... This requirement does not currently address the need for paved shoulders that has become more apparent in, in recent years as we've been building arterial streets with raised medians. The paved shoulders would provide an area for vehicles to maneuver around pedestrians, bicyclists, disabled vehicles. It also would provide an area for, for vehicles to get out of the travelway if they have any mechanical problems. The recommendation is that we increase the improvements beyond center line to 28 feet to allow for an eight-foot paved shoulder. This is in keeping with the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials' policy and would, in staff's opinion, increase the safety to the traveling public on our arterial streets. Staff is therefore recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council the modification to the municipal code to increase the improvements to 28 feet beyond center line.
Thank you. Do I have any speakers on this matter? Mr. Ludiki?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and to consider a motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 0838 recommending to the city council approval of an amendment to the subdivision ordinance modifying the required improvements beyond center line on arterial streets.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0 and this item will be scheduled for a future city council meeting for their consideration.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is amendment, it's a public hearing on amendment to Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code Cargo Container Regulations. Public hearing is open. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Chairman Vos, I'd like to introduce to you Marta, Marta Brown from the city's Department of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization, and she will provide the staff report on this matter.
Ms. Brown?
I'll try that again. Good evening, Chairman Vos and members of the commission. The public places a high priority on the commitment and ability of local agencies to maintain neighborhoods, protect property and property rights, and preserve the value of public and private investments. In further instance, this commitment, the city of Lancaster is dedicated to improving and protecting health, safety, and welfare of neighborhoods within the city of Lancaster. And the use of cargo containers as permanent accessory structures for permanent or long-term storage has been found to be detrimental to the appearance of, I'm sorry, of residential and other zones in the city. The city has expended a considerable effort to improve neighborhoods and commercial corridors. This includes a financial investment as well as staff time in these areas. The ordinance before you, for consideration, repeals sections of the zoning code and enacts requirements within the zoning, existing zones pertaining to the use of cargo containers for storage. The intent of the ordinance is to set requirements for the temporary use of such containers within residential, commercial, and industrial zones, but to prevent the permanent placement of these containers in any zone. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. There may be, when you say temporary, how would that be enforced?
There are specific temporary provisions in each of the sections of the zoning ordinance that pertain, you know, for commercial, residential, industrial. Specifically, if it is with a building permit, as long as a building permit is active, they may have a storage container onsite, like if they're developing a residential neighborhood or if they have construction going on at the site, then they may allow that container to be there no longer than 30 days after the permit has been completed and finalized. So that would be temporary in that nature. If there was a problem with a unit, say there was a fire at a residence, they're able to put a temporary container, storage, a pod or a cargo container to move their belongings and to, to secure them, then if, once a permit is active, it will then go, it would be attached to the active permit for the construction and the rehabilitation of that home. If a person or a business is relocating, there's the opportunity for them to have these new pods delivered. They could put their belongings inside or their, their wares and then they would be moved offsite. Those would be considered temporary uses.
Right, I understand. But are we relying on code enforcement or report to code enforcement to, so someone will have to, have to put a complaint into code enforcement for it to actually be enforced?
No, they would, they are required by this, if the new zone isn't enacted, they would be required to come in and obtain a permit. That would be signed off by code enforcement, planning, and building if a building permit is also required on that site. So we would have the notice that there's a permit, that there should be a temporary use on that site so that we could monitor the length of time that it's at the, at the place of business or residence.
Thank you.
Is there a charge for the building permit?
It would be a minimal, well, for the building permit, it would be whatever's appropriate for the construction on the site. If it's the permit for the, a temporary use of a container, it would be an administrative fee as enacted by the city council.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further from anyone?
Just one quick question, is that would this regulation affect the folks that have cargo containers currently or would it be grandfathered and they'd be allowed to keep theirs?
They would not be allowed to keep them. It would affect those individuals and they would have six months following the date of approval or enactment to remove the cargo container from site.
Okay. I see some cards, so we have speakers?
I have one speaker, Mr. Chairman David Sinclair.
Mr. Sinclair?
I just came across this like a couple of hours ago, so I just like scanned through here, so forgive me if I'm misreading this or whatever, but it looks like it's going to apply to all cargo containers that are on residential property and I'm, I just wasn't clear, because I'm thinking that if somebody's got like a, you know, two and a half or five acre parcel and they've got storage containers on the property that are maybe not visible to the street, is, is it applying to those as well? I'm not sure. It looks like it is. So I was just hoping that, you know, you would take into consideration people that have large parcels that have need for storage and then also in, in commercial properties where people have a, a need for increased inventory, especially like during the Christmas season, if they have, you know, normally they've got a store that they fill up with inventory on their regular course of business, but during the Christmas season, they've got an influx of inventory that they need and maybe they need just temporary for a couple of months, they need extra storage. I think that something like that might be an exception that should be considered. That's all I was thinking about.
Okay. I'm sure we can answer your questions if you want to hang on a moment. I know the answer to both of them, but we'll let staff tell you.
Mr. Chairman--
Please proceed.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, in terms of the, the issue of does it apply to existing cargo containers that are on rural zone properties, the answer is yes. As currently drafted, the ordinance would require their removal. The second issue in regards to seasonal storage, as it's referred to, there is an already existing provision in the zoning code with reference to commercial sites that they can request a temporary use of outside containers for seasonal inventory holding and things of that type. That's actually been in the code for probably 15 years and there are a number of businesses within the city that already do that. So it would not, this ordinance would not affect those provisions. So it would not, you know, impair the ability to use those types of containers on a seasonal basis.
All right. Thank you. Clear? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any further speakers, questions, comments?
No further speakers cards, Mr. Chairman.
None. Thank you. All right. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Could I say something?
Say whatever you want.
Oh, great. I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of this motion. I, I think that this is a tremendous burden on people that have larger pieces of property that I, I certainly see where this is something that should maybe be done for some, anybody that lives under, on a property that's under maybe an acre, but on anything over an acre, I, I think that, that there are a number of properties that are over an acre. A storage container or two is not an eyesight and I know many, many people that have storage containers that are on, over an acre. I belong to an organization, a very well-intentioned organization that owns a storage acre on a property that's on two and a half acres and we use it to store a number of our belongings and we need it. So, and I know of other organizations that, that have that also and it would be a tremendous burden for them. So I think that we need to rethink this. It's a little bit harsh right off the box and I'd like the city to consider it a little strongly, a, a little more carefully before they, they come up with it. I'd like the staff to look at it a little bit more carefully.
All right. Thank you.
So obviously I missed the Monday's meeting. Didn't know we, we had those type of concerns. Obviously I see, I know what the intent is. However, someone with a large amount of land, I can understand what you're, what you're talking about. And part of running a smart government is compromise and I think adjusting the wording here wouldn't be too, too bad. I don't think it's too difficult to adjust the wording. So maybe if we continue it and they can adjust the wording slightly where people with a certain amount of acreage, I don't know what that number is at this point, but I, I don't, I don't see that as a, not a bad request at all.
So are you offering a motion to continue or what are we doing, or what are you doing? You're just making a comment?
Well, right, I'm just making a comment. I'm not sure what the motion is going to be at, at this point. Are we, are we forced to vote on this or can we give staff some time to, to do a little rewriting based on, on--
I'm not getting anybody's permission to do anything, but--
Obviously.
The, the recommended ordinance and the, the purpose of the discussion tonight was not generated at this level, that is true. However, the recommendation is before us, so if you, if anyone would, I will offer a motion to adopt resolution 08-39 recommending to the city council approval of the ordinance regulating the use and placement of cargo containers. Do I have a second?
Before there's a second, I just wanted to voice my opinion that I'm all for the beautification of our city. I want it to look great, but I also do not want to hamper folks that this would not be an issue as far as aesthetics is concerned and it's just a practicality and we're going to end up burdening them with, with this type of thing. So just wanted to mention that before there's a second.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? Going once, going twice? Hearing none. Motion fails. What's your pleasure, folks?
I'd like to continue this and have the staff go back and look at it a little more carefully. I can't imagine, certainly if you had 10 acres or 20 acres, if you had a ranch, but maybe, maybe look at two and a half acres as the cutoff point.
So are, so are you offering a motion to continue this matter?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we're two people down.
Okay.
And we'll be, those two people will be back next time we meet.
A second.
Okay.
I don't disagree with that. Obviously, this has to be written with some specificity due to the fact that if a person or company owns a certain amount of acreage, they can kind of get under this, so we definitely have to take a look at how it's written also.
I was curious, from staff's perspective, is there a response to these concerns?
Speaking from the staff standpoint, the, the ordinance was drafted with two thoughts in mind. Number one, to try and address issues that were identified by the council in terms of their levels of concern. That's the reason that all of the, the different zoning classifications on residential are brought into it. The second was, and this is, came more from the attorney's office that drafted it, making sure that if there was going to be any kind of prosecution in regards to it, that, that they had a defensible legal ordinance to do so. So those, those are the two bases. To go a little bit further, you, you have basically, I think, three options as a commission this evening. You, you have the option to continue it over with, I would ask some pretty specific direction to staff as to what you would like looked at or revised. The second thing you can do is recommend approval to the council with some modification or comment to the ordinance in regards to addressing the issue that you're concerned with, or you can recommend the ordinance as drafted, there's already been a motion to that effect which failed, obviously.
So the motion that's before us is to continue the matter. Any further comments?
Do we want to establish a timeline as to when we want that continued to? Or just leave it open-ended?
My expectation is it'll be back at the next regular meeting.
It would be back in front of you in January.
Would it be back to us with revision?
With what?
With revision.
In the, in the areas that you provide some direction on, yes.
Would we discuss that at the planning?
It would be, it would be appropriate to give staff direction today if we, if you have it. So since you're the maker of the motion, if you have some specifics you'd like to address, have addressed in the, in the motion?
Well, I, I think where you're going here is you don't want to see people living in, in storage units on property and you don't want to see storage, extra storage units on small pieces of property. Is that, is that what you're thinking about?
That's, that's certainly, I think, a large part of the council's concern, but, but I think there are appearance issues outside of simply the urban areas of the city. It sounds like the question seems to be revolving around the idea of, is there a lot size or a zoning size designation that when you reach a certain point, the aesthetic effect of the cargo container does not appear to be, you know, as overwhelming? The only thing that I would ask, if, if that's what you're looking at, I would want to make sure that the attorney's office that drafted the ordinance does not have some kind of, of an issue with, you know, consistency in terms of treatment. I mean, because I, I wouldn't want a situation where, you know, if you didn't do it by zone classification, in theory, you could have two pieces of property zones, say semi-rural residential, where the normal size of a lot is a half an acre. But let's say you had one semi-rural lot that was a half acre and another one next to it that was five acres because it hadn't been subdivided, then the person with that five acres, if it's simply an acreage size, can place the container, but the other person cannot. There, there are some potential legal issues with regards to consistency within a zone. There may be very valid public reasons for considering a lot size as a cutoff, but I, I don't know if it can meet the test that we would need to meet. And that's a question that I think the attorney's office that drafted the code would need to look at somewhat. That, that's why I would ask that, you know, if that's the, the issue that seems to be the main concern, that's certainly something that we can take back to them and ask if, if there's a possibility of placing that kind of a provision somewhere within it. And if not, then that would be information that we could provide back to you also as a commission and say, here's the, here's the problem.
So, Mr. Ludiki, what you're saying, the intent from the council was to aesthetic, for aesthetically pleasing?
That's, that's my understanding of it, yes.
Okay. And, and obviously, if it's coming from the council, we want to be expedient with it. However, if we have concerns, I definitely think we need to hash it out before, before the meeting, but I don't know if today, if we, if we're able to give you everything that we have today, maybe a timeline for us-- maybe a timeline for us, give us two, three days a week, and we can write our issues with the ordinance to you, and then you can have some time to come back to us.
Sure, that would be helpful also, but, you know, if anything is of concern right now, we'd like to know what it is, because obviously, we'd like the attorney's office to start looking at that as soon as possible.
Why don't we use two and a half acres and see? Because that, to me, makes sense as a possible cutoff point.
Could that be in all zones or just residential?
That's something we'd have to take a look at.
I mean, see if that's a possibility.
I think it's mainly residential that I'm hearing the concern in.
Yeah. In my mind, it isn't necessarily the size of the lot, it's how far from the property line the container is, because aesthetically, somebody could have a twenty-acre lot and set it right at the edge, right next to somebody else's dwelling.
You know, the real challenge is going to be whatever is ultimately adopted, if in fact, something is adopted by the City Council, that if you get into the aesthetic analysis of a code enforcement person or a team of code enforcement people, I think you're going to end up with a nightmare on your hands. It's just my own point of view.
But you could address aesthetics by saying that the container needs to be two hundred feet from a property line, something like that, that would place it into the property. And that way, it wouldn't matter what size the lot is. You could say it's five hundred feet, which if it was five hundred feet, it could no longer be an acre, could it? So...
Although, I think, Mr. Vudiki, some of the concerns that have been raised relate to other than residential use. For instance, if you think about it, you will see that in a lot of uses, for instance, churches, for instance, some industrial uses or some commercial uses, you'll find that folks tend to use either large or smaller, what, shipping containers, cargo containers, what we all understand, have even gone so far as to paint them, to stucco them, to put roofs on them, to make them look like they are a permanent structure. However, this ordinance, the way it's written, doesn't give any condition or any consideration of that. What it doesn't preclude is storage units that are not cargo containers. Doesn't limit those, it just limits cargo containers. The C train, basically, is what the purpose is, and I would bet that if we start tweaking it, the city attorney is going to suggest to us that it's probably not going to fly because it's not an equitable enforcement if you tweak the zonings. But again, that's up to the city attorney. So the motion is to continue the matter, which would be the next meeting. The issues I've heard, unfair burden, lot size, zoning, and location of the units, right?
Now, the ones that are in the front yard in your neighborhood probably should be recreated.
What?
Luckily, there's not one in my yard, but you're right, there, I know of a couple.
Did you find it too? But I told you about it.
Absolutely. They're there, and those I'd like to see go away.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Unless they're there on a temporary basis for temporary use, then that's perfectly fine. But, yeah, my entire issue, just for me personally, is how close it would be to the property line. That's it. If I could make one suggestion, it would be that, and in my mind, I'm trying to decide whether that's a hundred feet, two hundred feet, or what it is, but that would also create an issue as far as lot size, but it wouldn't actually call out for a lot size.
Out of the thousands of cities, I'm sure we're not the first one to think that we want our city to be aesthetically pleasing. Why recreate the wheel? I'm sure there's ordinance out there that's covered this issue before, so hopefully, the staff can get their hands on something that's good, and maybe we can redraft it, kind of in our image.
I'm wondering, Frank, my personal feeling is, why are we taking off on storage containers when you drive down the street every day and there are all those old cars sitting? You know, let's take off on old cars or old tractors or, you know, old vehicles of some kind. Those are much more offensive to me personally.
I think the City Council had a first reading of ordinance last meeting, limiting street parking to seventy-two hours, and, but you're talking about on private property.
Yeah, that have been there forever and...
Maybe they're antiques, who knows?
They're antiques. They definitely don't work.
Okay, so, the motion is to continue the matter to the next meeting. The issues are expressed were potential unfair burden on property owners, limiting the, allowing the use of cargo containers on lot sizes in rural residential. Zoning, which zoning issues should be, should or should not be allowed to have cargo containers, and the location of these cargo container units within property lines, if I understand it correctly. Is there anything else?
I don't know if you mentioned the two and a half acre.
Yeah, lot size being two and a half acre. Anything further? Okay. So, if we're ready to vote?
Well, if they're, my question is, if they weren't able to make that equitable, and the attorney, it couldn't fly as far as the attorney's concerned, would the same, the same report come back to us? Would it be the same recommendation next month, or we don't know that?
It would be the, well, it would be largely the same recommendation. I mean, generally, we'll try and make adjustments where we can. If there was some real legal issue with why you shouldn't do this, the staff report would indicate the reason, you know, from the attorney's standpoint.
Because I can see the point with a half acre versus a two and a half acre, that it would not be aesthetically pleasing on a half acre lot to have those containers. That's how I feel, but we can wait till next month and see what shows up.
But you do see that you could create the same problem on a two and a half acre lot if it was placed as close to the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Further discussion?
Motion passes four one. The item will be continued to the regular January meeting.
Okay, we did not consider the minutes of the last meeting. Why don't we take about a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene, so the members can have a chance to review the minutes we just got handed to us tonight? All right, so seven oh five? We'll adjourn.
Somebody driving a silver Honda Accord parked in the far corner of our car. It's over the Hanus River. Not very far. No, no. Sorry, it's on the...
Oh, yeah. That's something.
Hammond.
Yeah.
What?
It's a camera.
Yeah.
Have the security been at the facility longer than the last three or four weeks?
Oh, yes. Yes, they've been here since the last CUP meeting. We are required, if an event is more than one hundred eighteen, that we provide security. And we'll have a minimum of two up to five guards. During the Greek festival, I think we had like fourteen security guards throughout the neighborhood.
And those are professional?
Yes, they're run by prime security.
Oh, yeah. They were idiots. Oh, they were idiots. I can't even remember. Hey, you're the one who said we have three minutes. She was making her memory.
Five minutes. Five. Five thousand, five thousand people. They're not standing there. They only have five items to give. That's...
That's not Walmart. That's not everything. True. That's not...
Why he was alive. Charlie.
They're going to... I said it very big. Yeah, and it had the question. Yeah. Very nice. Better stop talking than that. Okay.
Good morning. Your father showed our series.
Yeah. I didn't see it. Oh, here. Yeah. Was it the monster? It took more than a second. I'm sure it's...
That's correct.
Yeah. That's why I was... That's what I was... She had a little... I didn't know. Wow. At the neighborhood's chances. Those are wonderful. Just don't think like that. Those are the way they have it.
All right, we're back in session, and the last item on our agenda is the first item, which we carried over, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth and the minutes for the special meeting of October twenty-seventh. Have a motion.
This one, you want to go together?
Yeah. Go them together if you, if that's your pleasure.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand eight, and the minutes from the special meeting of October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved in a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, Director's announcements. We have a discussion of some additional meeting times.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we are anticipating that the draft environmental impact reports for the proposed commercial projects at the intersection of Sixtieth Street West and Avenue L
All right, we're back in session and the last item on our agenda is the first item, which we carried over, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth and the minutes for the special meeting of October twenty-seventh. Have a motion.
Do you want to go together?
Yeah. Go them together if you, if that's your pleasure.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand eight, and the minutes from the special meeting of October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved in a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, Director's announcements. We have a discussion of some additional meeting times.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we are anticipating that the draft environmental impact reports for the proposed commercial projects at the intersection of Sixtieth Street West and Avenue L will be issued for public review on or about January ninth. One of the typical actions that we take during the forty-five day review period of those documents is to provide the public with an opportunity to make oral comments on the adequacy of those environmental documents at a planning commission meeting. Given the fact that there is the potential for a lot of comment on these, we have asked you last week to consider a couple of potential dates for a special meeting, at which time the only item on the agenda would be the provision of, or the opportunity for that testimony. From a commission standpoint, you would not be asked to deliberate, debate, discuss, or certainly not determine anything at that time. Your role would be to listen. We have looked at, and it appears that both from a staff standpoint and taking into account everyone's availability, the eighteenth of February is probably the best of those times that would fall within the normal review period. The second thing that we asked you to consider, given the fact that we think there may be quite a few members of the public who would want to comment, is what time would be a reasonable starting time for that meeting, recognizing that it could go some length of time. You know, you have that information pretty much in front of you. You know, two members of the Commission have indicated they could begin as early as three in the afternoon, one at four, one at five, and we haven't been able to get any information from Commissioner Molly, given his, I think probably being still overseas. And we don't have any feel yet from Commissioner Berkey in regards to that. I'll leave it to you as to what you would want to do with setting this. The question may be raised, why is there some urgency to this? Well, at the time that we issue the notices of availability for the draft environmental impact reports, we need to indicate what opportunities the public has to comment and in what venues. So we need to be able to provide the date and the time of the meeting. We are also, we being myself and Jocelyn Swain, the city's environmental planner, will be briefly tomorrow evening at the Quartz Hill Town Council meeting to also provide them with information regarding the availability of these documents and their opportunities for comment. And it would be certainly helpful if we were able to tell them, you know, that date and expected time for the commission meeting.
All right, thank you. So you're suggesting, and based on the input we've received from the members through your office, the eighteenth of February would be best. Just to be clear, it's my understanding, and I just need to verify, that the environmental impact report review process, the forty-five day public review period, and the opportunity to give verbal testimony to the commission, is not required by code, but it's a courtesy that the city is and has done for years, and most public agencies do. So that's the purpose of the meeting, is to take testimony, take input, listen, and determine adequacy at a future time after the public verbal comments and written comments are responded to by the environmental consultants and city staff, right?
Yes, that is all correct.
Okay, very good. So the question before us is, will the eighteenth work for everyone, or for a majority at least? And if it is, will that work for you, Mr. Berkey?
Yeah, the eighteenth works. Five o'clock would be the earliest time.
I see, okay, very good. The question becomes, if we start earlier, and members can, if the members choose to start earlier, that doesn't preclude folks from offering testimony, it just gives people more time, not less time than we typically have, right?
Yes, I would suggest that if you look at an earlier starting time than your typical time, which is six o'clock, that you indicate, and I think we can indicate in the notice, that there will be a minimum amount of time provided.
Right.
You know, that they are assured that they can come and give testimony.
I see.
So, you know, something to the effect the meeting will not end before.
Well, I see what you're saying. Not end before nine o'clock, for instance?
Yeah, you know, set some time that probably crosses so that people have a reasonable opportunity to attend.
Right, okay.
And I think that hits, definitely hits on my concern, was that if we have the meeting at like two or three P.M., that kind of puts a bad cloud over us. I think we need to be absolutely critical, we be as transparent as possible, dealing with especially this issue. So I think the regular time, and at the earliest I'd say five, that we can have it, so people can get off work and get to the meeting and make testimony. I don't care if we stay here till midnight, I want to make sure that nobody says, hey, I didn't get a chance to speak out, even if it is on the environmental impact.
I do have a concern about staying here till midnight, actually. I would like to, if we could, put an end time to that meeting as well. I think that if we're in a position of sitting here for six or seven hours listening to testimony, it kind of loses, you can lose focus. And is there a possibility that if we do put an end time to that, perhaps we say nine o'clock, ten o'clock, whatever we agree on, that we can schedule an additional meeting if people aren't through giving testimony on that?
You certainly could do that. You could have a kind of a spillover meeting, if you wanted to look at it that way. The only thing that I would indicate is that I believe it's either the twenty-second or the twenty-third that we would expect the timeframe for comment to be over.
Okay.
So you, you know, you may want to look, for myself, I don't know that the nineteenth would work, but I'm not sure that I would have to be here either. I think that there are other staff who could adequately cover that. You may simply want to look at the next evening, say the nineteenth.
It depends on, wouldn't it depend, it would depend then on the comments from the public.
Certainly, and I think you're going to know pretty quickly, you know.
If, for instance, the Commission directs you that it would begin at five, would end no later than?
Ten.
Ten P.M., given three-minute intervals on an environmental document. The public comment relates to the environmental document, not the project.
Correct.
That comes at a later time, so that comes after the environmental document is reviewed, and the project is considered sometime in the future, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, this is a very technical process, is what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I think that perhaps what you could do is reserve, you know, to the extent that you can, the nineteenth, just in case there's a need for that. But I think you'll be able to tell fairly quickly, you know, at the time the meeting starts, whether you're going to need those times or not, so.
Well, if you say, for instance, you're going to have your meeting from five to ten, and someone shows up here at nine forty-five, and the meeting's been over for two hours because only three people showed up and commented.
Sure.
That could be problematic.
Yeah. We would have to, we would have to look at how to structure it. I, you know, you could indicate the meeting will last until at least seven P.M. or eight P.M. or whatever you want to state. However, in no event will the meeting last longer than ten P.M. if that's.
How long will the staff presentation take, fifteen, twenty minutes?
I'm not sure it will take that long, quite frankly. It will be, you know, a summary of the document and process and so forth. But once again, trying to adhere to our own ground rules, which is it's really not a discussion of the project per se. Sometimes the less said, the better, you know, because people will have had the document by then for.
Forty days.
Forty days.
It's your pleasure, folks. You want to start at five? You want to start at six, regular time?
I'd like to start at five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Everybody agree?
Yeah, I'd like to start at five. I'd like to let people know that we're going to give them time to speak till at least eight, and tell them that we'll stay here at the longest till ten. Does that sound?
Five to eight, minimum.
Yes, so three hours.
And no later than ten P.M., right?
Correct.
So if the last speaker is talking at ten, whenever they're finished, the Commission may adjourn and.
Yes.
May continue the hearing.
At five o'clock on the nineteenth, is that?
Eighteenth.
No, but if we had to continue, it would have to be at five o'clock on the nineteenth.
You can decide at that meeting, I would think.
Quick question. If public testimony is done by six thirty, then we sit here till eight o'clock, in case anybody else walks in, correct?
That's correct. If you've committed that you will, you know, allow testimony until at least eight o'clock, then yes, we would need to be here.
All right, so we're clear on what you, that works for you, Brian?
It works fine for me, yes.
Okay. Any other announcements or comments you want to offer?
Is that directed to me, or?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
No other comments.
Okay. Anything for the Commission, on the Commission's agenda? Anything anybody wants to bring up?
There was an issue of one of the citizens thought the meeting started at seven instead of six. At what point do we need to bring that issue up?
We can bring it up under Commission Agenda.
You mean the next meeting?
Go ahead, we can bring it up when?
You can bring it up under Commission Agenda.
Okay.
If it's a question or discussion on that.
I'm not clear what.
There was a posting of this meeting on property, and the posted time said the meeting started at seven o'clock.
Oh, really?
That's the report that I hear.
You mean the, which item?
Item three.
Right, item number three. Thirtieth and thirty-fifth.
Well, the item's already been acted upon.
No, we continued it. No, this is the one that we voted on and approved. This was the.
So, Mr. City Attorney? Supposedly there's a, supposedly there's a posting area in the notice for the meeting. However, someone, it.
Larry McPhee.
We'll get to you in a minute, sir. Why don't you have a seat?
The newspaper article, the newspaper article and the noticings were correct. The sign posting on the property was dated, it basically said it started at seven P.M. instead of six. The sign posting's a courtesy notice, I believe. So the legal documents that were posted in the newspaper and the mailers went out correctly.
Were correct?
Yes, they were.
All right, now, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
She's correct, that the, from what I understand, the publication and the mailings indicated the correct time, and that would be sufficient to satisfy the notice requirement.
Okay.
The fact that there was inadvertent typographical errors, it sounds like it was probably just the seven o'clock original meeting start time that, you know, until the Commission changed it to six o'clock, it sounds like that just sort of stayed in that notice. But the, because the posting and mailing were accurate, that did afford sufficient notice. I'm not sure how comfortable that will make you, but as a technical legal matter, that satisfies the notice requirements.
And it doesn't make me feel comfortable at all. I mean, if it was an important issue, and they're walking outside their home and it says seven, even though there's mailings that were out there, I mean, we were wrong in this instance, so I'm not sure how we're going to fix this situation. I'm not sure if you had public comment or anything, but.
The matter's already been heard, it's been voted on.
Yes, the.
The applicant is not here. As far as they were concerned, the matter is finished. So what's your recommendation, Mr. City Attorney?
Right, the, right, from my perspective, because the noticing was adequate, the remedy for anybody who believed that there was inadequate notice would be to appeal the matter to the City Council.
Okay, and that's a, and the process of doing that is just filing a letter, is there a form that a person could fill out?
There's an actual application form, petition form, that you would file with the City Clerk's Office. It needs to be filed within ten working days following this meeting, along with the appropriate filing fee for that.
Okay.
Are those signs, are they checked? I mean, the meetings used to be at seven o'clock, and that does concern me, because I don't want that to happen to other people, and along with Jonathan, I feel really uncomfortable about this as well. Because what's the point of putting the signs up if, you know, it is a form of noticing that the information's incorrect?
Yeah, the sign posting, and it's operating under a policy that was actually adopted by the City Council, I think in probably nineteen eighty-six or somewhere in there. They do not qualify as legal notice. There are two reasons that they don't. Number one, we require, as a matter of the Council's policy, that they be posted a minimum of fourteen days prior to the hearing. That does not even meet the requirements for SEQA, for the California Environmental Quality Act, in terms of noticing. And the reason for the shortened timeframe is that the Council felt that the notices that were provided at that time, as far as mailings and publication in the newspaper, and now actually posting also on the Internet, although the Internet didn't exist at that time, weren't sufficient for people who lived outside the radius or may not otherwise be aware. The intent of providing the signs on the property was to alert people that there was an action item, and would hopefully, you know, cause them to contact us if there was a question. But because of the fact that they don't include environmental information on them, nor do they meet the environmental noticing timeframe that the California Environmental Quality Act calls, neither the Council, when they adopted the policy, nor the City Attorney's Office, has ever considered them to be a posting of property designed to meet a legal notice requirement in the California Government Code. Those are still met by the mailed notice, and actually, staff, you know, from the city's standpoint, we exceed the legal minimums on that. And, you know, in the case of, at least this particular property, a property that's within the rural zone, which includes the track to the southeast of the site, the legal notice requirement, the mailing requirement under state law is three hundred feet from the property. We mail those to a distance of fifteen hundred feet, five times the notice requirement of the state. So from our perspective, you know, at least from a legal standpoint, I think the notice is correct, but I understand the concern, and, you know, staff tries very hard to make sure that the signs are posted on the right property, that they don't get, we've had situations where they get knocked down, you know, by people who are, you know, I think just vandalism at times. But we do our best to try to make sure that that form of notice is available to people. It appears, though, that there was a glitch on this one.
I don't, you know, I understand what you're saying. Of course, we're within the legal requirement, that's fine, but that doesn't necessarily make it right, where you say, we're doing it as a courtesy, so if we're wrong, so what? I kind of don't accept that. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. And obviously, that was in nineteen eighty-six. We need to grow with the nation, I think. The Internet, if you're going to post on our Internet, should be legal also, because that's an official posting of something. I don't necessarily see, you know, if it's something really important, posted the wrong date and everybody missed it, that could be seen as not being transparent, just like I was saying before. So I think that it's critical that we get things like this correct.
Commissioner Irvin, that's why we give notice in multiple ways, you know, hoping that one of those will be, you know, seen by people who would have an interest in it.
A comment that I would make is, I understand the letter of the law, and then I also understand the heart and intent of a body. And I believe that, perhaps I'm speaking for the Commission, I'm certainly speaking for myself, that we do want to be transparent, and if a citizen reads something, no matter where the source is, that we put out as a city, and they come and respond to that, I by no means want to discourage that citizens from being part of the process. So I want to figure out a way, perhaps, to. So I want to figure out a way, perhaps tonight, to allow this person that took the time, got in her car and came down here, to be part of the process. Is there any way that tonight we can still hear his perspective, even though this matter's already been voted on?
The opportunity to speak public business from the floor on non-agendized items. However, I think it's the Chair's prerogative to hear whatever a person may want to hear, as long as the Commission agrees. What a person has to say, I should say, rather than... So, we can do that. However, I don't believe it could be considered testimony relative to an action item that's already been taken. I think that's a moot point. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I, you know, I don't disagree with a lot of what everyone has said here this evening, but if the project was legally noticed in the paper, I saw the notice in the paper, and was mailed to what property owners on the last tax roll within 1,500 feet, rather than the 300-foot limit? And as a courtesy, a sign was posted that has been reported in error, which I think is unfortunate, certainly, to say the least. So if that works for everyone, we'd be more than happy to listen to whatever citizen has to say about really any subject, which has been our practice, pretty much, whether it's on the agenda or not. So if that satisfies everyone, I think we can do that.
I'd love to hear.
All right. Anything else on the Commission's agenda before we move to public testimony?
I would like to get some type of report from the Atlantic Center, how that negotiation's going with the new management.
Actually, there is a resident living within that area who has agreed to act as a facilitator in those negotiations. He actually came and spoke to me this morning for some 20 minutes as to what has happened on it. I would tell you two things. Number one, he appears at this point to have the, some credibility with both sides, which I think is good. He believes that the problem is resolvable, which is also good. He has a meeting scheduled tonight with representatives of the Greek Orthodox Church. He told me he would keep me posted on what's happening, you know, and I would say that at this point in time, what we would want to have happen is at least happening right now. There is, there is a dialogue going on between the two sides in the dispute. So as a person who says it's best not to mess with something while it's simmering, I'm not going to mess with it. The positive thing is, there is some movement, apparently.
Thank you. All right, anything further from the Commission?
My last comment I'd just like to say is, I'd like to make sure that somebody is time activating, checking on the signs that are out there, and making sure any future signs that are put out, you're taking care of that?
I'll see to it, right, if it's checked.
All right, anymore? All right. So, it's now public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the Commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware that when addressing, should be aware that when addressing the Commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda, when we ask you to please complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary, individual speakers are limited to three minutes. So do we have a speaker's card? You can fill it out when you're finished, that's okay, just so we know how to contact you, that's the main thing. Please go ahead and state your name, if you would.
Okay, I'm Larry McPeak, and the Homeowners Association President of Rancho Tierra del Sol. And on the non-agenda item, tentative tract map number 63314 and tentative tract map 66285. So I'd like to address this evening. I see you have a map on the wall here, could I walk to it, or is it better to have me recorded right here?
We can't hear you if you're...
Okay, then I'll just, I'll talk.
There's a laser pointer available, I think, somewhere. Is there a laser pointer?
I'd like to go back to the last rendition that was... Okay, so that's, has this changed yet? There we go, that's got it. And here's the, there we go. Okay, again, the subdivision that I live in, right here, and the Homeowners Association President is this one, and as you probably know, all of the properties that are there are one-acre properties, they're approximately 40,000 square feet for property size. And if we, if we have some neighboring properties, this and this, which may have been discussed earlier this evening, which previously have been declared to be half-acre properties adjacent to 35th, and adjacent to J8 half-acre properties when they so developed in those areas. And I think that's to be common, or similar to what we have in our properties here, to help with the property values of our subdivision. And the school that would just come in here also has approximately, it looks like about a 20, 25-foot setback from the street to allow for what I'll say equestrian, because the intention of this subdivision, I believe, when it was established 20 years ago, was to be equestrian. There are several horses in horse properties there, people have horses at their homes. And for riding purposes, I would think that we could have better setbacks on the streets. As example, what we've had here on 35th, pardon me, K Street, right here, there's approximately a 25-foot setback to allow horses to walk. So what I'd be appealing for this evening is for the street designs going away from our subdivision to allow for equestrian use as we, as these subdivisions are developed. And also that, while these are half-acre properties here and half-acre development properties here, a portion of this, perhaps that and that, going away on this section here, would be developed as half-acre properties as well, so that the size of the properties, again, would be more common to our subdivision that we have here at this location. That's about all I had to say this evening. I don't know how your process works, so this is the first time I've come to speak before you. And I know that had I been here earlier this evening, I believe there would have been some discussion with the developer as to how, what his thoughts are to this proposal. So that's all I have, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. You do understand the Commission has acted on the matter and approved the tentative tract maps, both of them, the way they were presented, with the conditions on them. And if, as Mr. Ludick pointed out, if you have an appealable objection to that, there's a process that city staff will be happy to assist you with.
Right, thank you.
All right?
Thank you very much, I heard that this evening. And also just to comment, since the sign is up, and I think, I'm feeling that, well, since the sign was up, it needs to be accurate, you know, if there's, it may not need to have all...
Don't get an argument from anybody about that, that's for sure.
It may not need to have all of the information that the city is required to provide, but the information that is there needs to be accurate.
No question, thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers? All right, hearing done. Then we stand adjourned to Tuesday, January 6, 2009, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers for a special meeting of the Planning Commission to review and discuss proposed revisions to the City of Lancaster General Plan Policy Document as part of, as part of the citywide general plan update process. Thank you.